Seeing the time have arrived, we're going to call to order the Tony Hanson Planning Board meeting for January 8th, 2024. We have moved the meeting to the second floor of the Town Hall, to the second-floor planning room, as a result of some technical difficulties that we're having downstairs in the Select Board's office. Before we start, I'm going to read tonight's preamble. I hereby call on January 8th, 2024, a meeting of the Tony Hanson Planning Board to order at 6:40 p.m. I would also like to announce for all those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution of WHCA dot TV. In attendance tonight, we have a full board, the administrative assistants, and the town planner from the planner's office. I'm sorry, I'm in correction. We have four members of the board. Our vice chair is not in attendance tonight. Mr. Cohen is not here, but we have all other board members, as well as the planner office is in full attendance. We have some folks that have signed into the audience this evening, so we'll be talking with them as the agenda goes along. Thank you for attending. The listings and the matters that are recently anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at this meeting, note that all items listed may in fact be discussed. Note that all items listed may in fact be discussed, and all items listed not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permissible by law. I completely flunked that, but that's okay. We'll edit that down the road. The agenda was posted last week, and it was posted not only on the town planner's website, but it was also posted at our planning board, our Tony Hanson, public display downstairs. The first item of business on tonight's agenda is a 6:30, now 6:40, approval of the December 11th, 2023 public meeting minutes. What is the will of the board? There's been a motion made by Mr. Benonado to approve the minutes for December 11th, 2023.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded by Mr. Ellis. Is there any discussion in regards to that motion? Once again, as always, thank you very much for a wonderful copy of our minutes. Appreciate that.
Report point of order, if interest.
Point of order.
Do you think we ought to post down at the door that we're upstairs now?
I just did.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. That's a great point. So seeing no other further discussion in regards to the motion that's on the floor, all those in favor for approval of the minutes today, five by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved for 01, Tony. The time having arrived, we're going to open up the public hearing for at 6:00. Can't see the clock up there. At 6:44, we're going to open up the public hearing for the Continued MBTA Zoning District Progress Update and Presentation, Presentation of the Proposed District by VHB Association, and the Discussion and Presentation of Preliminary Zoning Bylaws in Conformance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A of the Zoning Act. Town Planner.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, as the board is well aware, we're working on the MBTA zoning requirements, the draft for the bylaws, and the creation of the zone itself. I've been working with Luke Mitchell and Krista McGaher from VHB. We're working with them through a grant from Mass Housing, and they're going to help us get over the line in being full compliance by the end of 2024. This evening, Ms. McGaher is here, and she, we have a slide presentation to show the board, and I'll bring that up on the screen. And Krista, if you want to take the floor?
Sure. I'm not sure how this works.
Wherever you feel, where you feel comfortable.
Good evening. I'm Chair and Planning Board. My name is Krista McGaher. I'm an urban planner with VHB. We've been working for the past few months with Tony on the MBTA community's zoning updates. We do have a presentation for you today. Not sure, some of it might be similar to what Tony presented to you last month, but since then, we have revised the district boundaries, so all of the numbers in the actual area you'll be seeing will be different, so you can get into it. So just project overview, MBTA community zoning was enacted basically to remove barriers to development of high-density housing, and this is done through allowing for zoning that allows multifamily buy rights, so that's what we've been working on. And our team at VHB has been working with Tony to define the zoning district. We've also been preparing some graphics for support, for outreach, as well as the compliance model, which is a tool provided by the state where we input the district and then it gives us an output as to whether it confides with the multifamily unit capacity. So this is our timeline. We picked off with Tony in October. We came down and had a tour of the town, as well as the district. And currently, right now, we have some district visuals to show you. We still have a few that we are preparing, and we plan to submit the entirety to the state for approval before that goes to spring town meeting for rezoning. So this is an overview of the general requirements. Hanson is a commuter rail community, so the minimum district size is 50 acres, minimum multifamily unit capacity is 750 units. That's required at 15 units per acre. So that's multifamily permitted as a right with no restrictions, and the deadline is December of this year. So this is an outline of the profile of the district. The entirety of the district, it's almost 79 acres, is within the half-mile radius, and it covers 13 separate parcels. So this is the zoning input summary. What you see on the left, those will be part of the dimensional standards that you see in the draft zoning code that Tony has provided to you. So these are the inputs that we input into the model, the main ones that it then calculates what the capacity will be. So here is just a view of the results that we've gotten with the current district that we put into the model. So this district is modeling 787 units, which is above the required 750, 15.4 units per acre, which is above the required 15, and it's 78.74 acres, which is above the required So here, we have a 3D rendering perspective of the overall district and the existing conditions that are there right now. What you see highlighted in light red, those are the parcels that, in this most recent version of the district, we added, and that was partially to include more of the Main Street corridor in this multifamily zoning district. And those two, in yellow, seen there, are the station land and development that is currently under construction. It might be close to completion at this point.
The first building is pretty, and I guess they're going to be breaking ground shortly on the second building.
Yeah, they stayed at all of them.
Right. And so here, in the next few slides, we go through and just detail the existing land uses that are there. So the south portion along Main Street, those are all industrial. There are a few commercial uses, and there are five existing multifamily units within this district. And some of the uses we just listed out there are the T-South Market for commercial, and then the Cranberries Square Commercial Building is the one that's seen in the bottom right, and that has a assortment of used units out of there as well. And then you can see the proposed new mixed uses, so those are going to be ground floor commercial with over 20 units above on the second and third story for both of those. So those are important to this corridor as well. So this just represents the current, the current zoning that exists right now. You can see, it's definitely a mix of different zoning districts, as well as that flexible overlay that is what allows currently the mixed use along this corridor. This is specifically to highlight, there are a lot of wetlands on the rear portion of this parcel, so developable area in the future when thinking of future development. There are pockets of that larger parcel that are developable, but there are also a lot of constraints with the wetlands. So this is just to highlight that, as well as potential for redevelopment along Main Street. And then, so this is titled as District Vision. I do want to caveat that this is not any sort of plan for the area. It is just conceptual to show that what could be done along this corridor in terms of mixed uses, any sort of vision of how it could be in the future, but we don't want to say that this is any sort of plan. It's just to demonstrate what this type of zoning could allow in this area, continuing those mixed uses from what is currently under construction west to the commuter rail station along Main Street there, and the potential for green spaces as well, and allowing for the type of village feel where it's ground floor retail with residences above that typical New England-style development that could be allowed close to the train station. So that's it with the visuals that we have. We do have quite a few next steps, which is getting everything finalized and pre-approved by the state before moving forward with town meeting for rezoning in May. We also do have a few more renderings that we are going to make, which are street-level concepts of what it might feel like, as well as, you know, finalizing the language, which I know Tony has sent to you for review as well.
How long is the state turning around for their approval timeframe from submission? Are we, well, within timeframe to have that ready for May, or have they been delaying approvals?
So they asked for 90 days from submission to turn around for the preapproval.
Is that a presentation that you have to make up at the state level, or just submit it?
You just submit it into, it's a form that you submit online.
So there's no formal meeting with anybody from state housing?
So I think, well, it's probably going through this process of the state, we'll probably be taking some simultaneous steps to sort of keep moving it along towards the town meeting, and then if something happens that we can't make it to town meeting, then we'll just take off, take the part.
Right. We have the deadline of October, we'd still pass the town in compliance by December, so...
Can I ask a question?
Actually, Mr. Kimmich, if we go to town meeting, and for some reason, the town decides, you know, they don't want to do it, then what?
We try again in October.
Right.
And then if they turn around and still, I think one of the emphasis, or one of the understandings that has to be made at the town meeting is that the town as a municipality, if the citizens, they have a right to shoot it down, but there will be consequences that might be on the other end that we'll have to deal with. We'll lose the ability for grants, for certain grants specifically. And the Attorney General, don't know if this will actually happen, but the Attorney General says that towns will be open to liability from possible fines and other action of fair housing and so forth. So they say that not only on a state level, but possibly a federal level, so it's one of those, I guess it's kind of like playing chicken, you know? Do you want to, do you want to not do it, and this is what's going to happen to you?
So there really isn't a choice, is what you're saying?
Until, until, I think, I believe there are some communities, and maybe some folks, you might know Krista or OCPC, there's some communities that I think are trying, looking to fight it, but until a court, you know, until a court says, you know, the state is in the wrong, we sort of have to go with it.
I think, Mr. Benonado?
I think that there's enough people in town who hate the old Ocean Spray plant, the dilapidated building, that I don't think will have much of a problem.
I mean, again, this is creating the district itself. We're not forced to create the housing. The housing, if and when it's created, is going to be through the private sector, you know? I mean, one of the parcels that falls within this zone is one that's owned by the town. The Hanson Housing Authority should be this one here. So, you know, that's one that HHA may consider looking at doing something with, but the rest of it is, it's going to be private sector that'll move it forward, just as you see with the, we'll call it the revitalization of Main Street with the retail and the mixed use with the Egan Project. You know, if he hadn't stepped up to do that, who knows? You know, the existing buildings might still be there.
Right.
You know, unless that happens, there really isn't anything that's... So I suppose the plus side is that the state is not saying you, they're saying you have to create the district, but they're not saying you have to create the housing, just a place for it.
State is also asking that we try to highlight it to the public in a positive. They're not mandating us to build housing. They're asking us to expand zoning for it, and in the same sense, there's so much flexibility within it, like getting that first-floor commercial, which is something that Hanson's been looking for anyway, and it's great to have it centered around your train station, and you're kind of creating this boundary that you wanted anyway, and just really enforcing to a town that it doesn't mean that you're getting the, how many, there are 14 units, is it?
15.
750, is what we're going to... 750. Like, can you imagine how long it would take Hanson to actually build 750, right? Like, it's not, I think people just get into like that fear, right?
Don't underestimate us. We know a lot of people here.
I mean, the one thing that they've, one of the last revisions, you know, was the last, last revision, was they're allowing for the mixed-use component now within the district. Before, it was just housing.
So you don't, you don't even actually have the, like, you couldn't do any of this under Title V. It doesn't even, this whole, this whole plan doesn't even make, you know, and I'm not talking against it, like, I'm going to go to town meeting and say this, but I just want to point out, it's clear that, you know, you can't do any of the things that you're creating in this district, right? And what the state is saying is like, you have to go to town meeting and get this thing approved, otherwise, we're going to sue you. And after it's all created, what are they going to do? Sue us for not complying with Title V? And, you know, like, because there's no way any septic systems can, to support these buildings can be put there.
Well, I mean, the, the Egan Project is unseptic, you know? So, I mean, you know, you're talking about innovative systems that would reduce the nitrogen loading by at least 50%.
Right.
For a lot of, for a lot of these projects, because obviously soil conditions, but you do bring up a good point, and that point, my understanding, has been brought up to the state as well, that you're looking for this housing, but some municipalities that have municipal sewage, their plants are either getting to capacity or at capacity, and they're saying, they're asking the state for permission to expand those, and they're being denied. So they're saying, okay, well, you can't have one without the other. We want to expand to allow the housing, but you're telling us we can't expand. So...
So, I mean, part of it, what we have as planners, right, the plan for the future, and we're looking at these people, and I'm not going to say cramming this plan down our throat, but at the same token, as planners, we're all sitting here, we know that, you know, this is not a good plan, because it's not executable, you know? So why have a plan that you can't execute?
I think, I think it's, like anything else, it's well-intentioned, but you have to really think about all the steps that are involved, and sometimes this, on the state level, it's like anything else, if you want to do something like this, you should probably bring in the engineers that are going to do the design work, and look at soil conditions and stuff like that, because then they can tell you, nice thought, but this is what you're going to actually have to do to make it work, you know? So, you know, because I know that the soil conditions down in this area are not the best, you know, but you could, you, you could, with the technology available, make it work, you know? I mean, ideally, what would be great is if we did have a municipal sewage treatment system, you know? But...
Well, you know, we looked into that, and I think it's, I think it was like 28 million, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, and, you know, how do you strap, you know, even if you get federal money that covers 50% of that, you know, 14 million and 10,000 residents, you know, it's a lot of money. And even, you know, if we looked down in this area and said, hey, let's try to look at maybe doing a studies like each Bridgewater is, and say, can we create some kind of compact sewage treatment plant that would service part of this area or just Main Street? Even that on its own has a lot of cost, significant cost, because of the infrastructure that has to go into it, you know, the sewer line, the pumps, or something like that, to make it all work, and then finding a suitable location for it, and then do, where do you say, you know, well, Main Street is where we'd like to revitalize, but you find out that, you know, Woodbine is more of a need, and because the septic systems are around monopons at pond, the ponds, you know, that's more of a need because you have all these structures, and the pond could be, is becoming contaminated, you know? So it's, it's not an easy...
Well, plus, you know, the other thing, looking at that area in the back, 17 acres, whatever it is, right, a good portion of that is wetlands, right? So we have a local bylaw, right, that, you know, says you have a 50-foot no-touch zone, and I know what everyone's saying already is that that won't apply here, right? So what that creates is a problem for, you know, if I was sitting on a conservation commission, I'd be greatly concerned, because I'm telling someone two blocks away that you can't do this and you can't do that, but then up the street, you know, they're building buildings right next to wetlands that are already there because they're exempt. That's kind of makes your ability to say no difficult. Just saying, you know?
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the attending public? Krista, thank you for your time. Really appreciate your presentation. Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
I've attended a motion to continue the public hearing until January, tentative January 22nd, planning board meeting. Motion's been made by Mr. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Benonado. Any questions in regards to that motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries 401, Tony. We'll continue this to the tentative January 22nd date, and we'll probably have that for a runner, although we haven't told May, I would assume.
Yeah, I think, Krista was saying that she reached out to the HLC to try and get some input from them and say, okay, what is it, basically, when are they available, how long would it take for them to review the project?
Okay.
So we're trying to make, she's trying to make progress there with them.
Would it be advisable to have open invitation for conservation? Come out at 22nd to add there, there are two cents to, if you want to do that more towards town meeting, or help conservation?
I mean, I can send out, I can send the draft bylaw, because you've made your comments that I asked you to basically do your homework, give me the comments, I'll take them in, and I can pass them along. I can pass this along to the conservation commission and say, hey, would you like to put some input in as well, you know? And the board of health, you know, trying to get as much input as I can.
Moving on our agenda to the next section, which would be appointments. At 7:04, continued discussion for improvement to private ways. Applicant Bob Goslin, K&amp;G Development Corporation seeks a positive determination for completed work on Roller Coaster Road in conjunction with proposed, proposed construction activity at 120 Roller Coaster Road, assesses map 79 lot 38. Town Planner.
So the last, at the last hearing, the drainage document that they had submitted had some edits. I had made some of those edits and sent it off to the applicant, asking him to get this revised, which he did, and he returned it back to us, I believe it was the 28th, received on 20th of December, with all the corrections that were requested at that time. I did pass this along to the highway superintendent today. He's going to take a look at it tomorrow and get back to me. I don't know if the board has had an opportunity to look at this revised paperwork.
Yeah, I looked at all the revisions on it. It was nice to see that, the changes that they put in there.
I mean, this, this is going to need to be signed and notarized anyway.
By the board itself?
Well, my understanding is, I asked the town administrator if she wanted to do it, or if she felt that the board, or the chair of the board could do it, and she said that the chair could do it, sign off on it, so it's something that you'd have to set up some time anyway to have it notarized here in town hall.
Mr. Kimmich?
First of all, it says in here, right, that, let me see if I can find it, Stormwater Professional is approved by the Highway Department and/or the Planning Board. That seems ambiguous, I guess. The word I would use, it's like, who? Who do we go to? You know, like, today, I'll go to the Highway Department, tomorrow, I'll go to the Planning Department. This doesn't seem the right way to do this, to either/or. I don't, I don't like that language. Just, that's just me personally. And the other thing is, we have, I believe it's two trusts up at the top of the page, and I guess my question, are those blind trusts? Do we know who these people are? Because we're going to have to enter into agreement with these people, and we don't even know they're there. And so I would like to get some advice from town council, as to whether we should be entering into agreement with a blind trust. Those are my two questions.
We do have some information in regards to the trust. It's posted, they have a reference on there for Public County Registry Page 57506, page 248. It's ambiguous that they just don't put their name on there. We do have some information from that reference, and we checked that out on Public County Registry. It is there, and I agree with you about the Highway and Planning Department. That's why I reached out to Tony today to see if we did get some input from Highway, so as long as we have the same as the town administrator, having to defer it to the planning board. If, if the Highway Director contacts the planner, Town Planner, and has, he's got some paperwork that says that they're going to defer it to the planning board, we'll take a peek at this on the 22nd.
I guess my fear is, you know, if you don't like what you get from the Highway Department, head on over to the Planning Board, see if you can get it some other way. You know, it just doesn't seem to me like something that we should be entering into. I mean, it's clear, according to our bylaw, that the Planning Board is the overseer of stormwater management, not the Highway Department, so that's another issue.
Well, you talk about notice. So number five, in the event that the landowner, its successors, and assigns fails to maintain the stormwater management facility in good working condition acceptable to the town, and if after notice by the Highway Department or Planning Board to correct a violation requiring maintenance work, so we've doubled up on people that can have the oversight to tell them that they have an issue.
Yeah, you go today, he goes tomorrow, and then the, you know, the person is like, who am I supposed to be answering to?
Yeah, but you've got, you've got the answer in your question, with the Planning Board is going to, is overseer of all the stormwater management, so that would, that would be where it starts. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, the department, I mean, number three, for me, is definitely an issue, right? As approved by the Highway Department and/or the Planning Board. It just doesn't, just doesn't sit right, so...
So that's just a humble opinion.
The first part of it does talk about a certified registered professional engineer.
Right.
Absolutely. You know, so he comes in, and what does he do? Like, roll the dice to see which board he decides to go to to discuss this?
Oh, no, it's both boards have a chart.
And/or, is what it says. Two important words, and/or.
So you'd rather, you'd rather see and versus or?
Yes.
You want to see, you want to see it come to both?
Yeah, we have duality, we have both departments throughout the document.
I think it's important that if the Highway Department's having conversations with somebody that relates to stormwater management, that the Planning Board should be notified. If you put in there and/or, then either one of them, you can just send it to either one and not care whether the other one knows what the other one's doing. So it's just, you know, throwing that out there.
Do you have to get back to them, Tony, to omit that?
Let me check with council on that, just to be sure. I mean, we haven't, you haven't signed anything.
For that particular thing on number three, I would just omit Highway Department.
Or just, I think John's more interested in omitting the word or, just say Highway Department and Planning Board.
Yes.
It'd be good to have that too. Yeah, and, it's just, and, you know, the or is the part that bothers me.
Want to make that as a motion?
Yeah.
As a motion on the floor by Mr. Kimmich to omit page two of four, item number three, to take out and/or, and to make it and.
Or where, or wherever it appears in the document.
Yes.
You want to see Highway Department and Planning Board, not Highway Department and/or the... You wanna see highway department and planning board, not highway department and/or the planning board.
Yeah, so I guess all references to uh, highway and, and uh, planning should be and rather than and/or.
Okay, there's the motion.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in the second in regards to that uh, edit omit for the inspection agreement. Any questions in regards to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero one, Tony, that carries. So if you can get them to change that and then by the twenty second, we'll also have an answer back from Jameson, I would assume. So we can proceed with signatures. That makes sense. We catch up. Moving on, we're gonna go on to the master plan update, provided update to the board and steering committee on Old Colony Planning Council's progress. Town planner. Well, I'm sorry, you want me to defer to the steering committee?
Well, I'm just gonna pull up, uh, we can, we can defer right to the folks in the audience.
Great.
Sure. We're pulling up your Apple list, or um, so, since the first meeting, we published the survey. Um, it's been out, we're working with the town to publish it on social media. Make sure people are seeing it and our next step in terms of advertising the survey itself is to have a sit-in day with the library and the COA, so I'll go with printed copies, digital QR codes and provide any assistance for anybody who needs help getting access to it. Outside of the survey, we are on the agenda for Camp Kewahni this week to get approval to use on the site for our second public meeting. We thought it'd be, it's a space that everybody in town really loves, really great way to open up conversation and communication. And that second meeting is all about roundtable conversation. So everybody put in a good word, not to charge, because it's technically town funds. And that'd be great. And so we're looking forward to doing that for the end of February, just waiting on their approval and I'll pick a day.
I just wanted to ask you a quick question. Have you talked to the town administrator about making sure that Camp Kewahni was available on that date? Because uh, I don't see why she wouldn't be able to make that happen.
Uh, I've been working with the coordinator for Camp Kewahni.
No, I, I understand that, but you know, the, the town administrator is the overseer of all. So it makes more sense to run that by her so that even if Camp Kewahni said no, um, the town administrator would be able to make that happen anyway.
I have to reach out to the town administrator this week, so I can add that to my, that's also me saying, Tony, I didn't send my email today. So tomorrow, when I send that email, I will add that to my ever-growing bullet list. In addition to that, we've been interviewing department heads around town. We've met with fire, police, highway, water commission, library, council on aging.
Town planner.
Town, town planner, one of five hundred town planner meetings. I think that's the run of where we're at so far. We've got a few people that we're waiting to hear back from. And then we obviously sat in with CPC a while back and we'll make sure we jump in for one more meeting of the conservation. I reached out to conservation today and select board will also make sure that we sit in with them because select board drives a lot of what gets voted in, so we wanna make sure that our goals for the plan are lining up with what they're doing. And in the background, for all that public maintenance stuff, we are all compiling data, most of which is what you saw at that first meeting and doing a lot of the background writing for getting each of the chapters set up.
Tony, is the QR code on the town page yet?
Yeah, it's up.
Yep, the survey's on the town page and there's also a link to the hosted OCPC master plan site.
On the town page and the planning section, or it's just on the main page?
It's on the main page.
It's on the main page, yeah. I found the master plan tab the other day, so it is up and working. We can also look at, if you think it's important to add it to a second page, I'm happy to pitch for that. And also, if you guys can, I know some of you sit on multiple boards at the beginning of your board meetings, if you can mention to the ones that are being recorded or have public audiences that the survey's live and that there's access to information on the website, that's gonna be a really good helper of getting the word out.
Are you gonna do any advertising, you know, like in the um, the Hanson Express?
I can reach out to them about the survey if I haven't already. I will take a look into that.
Have you had, I'm sorry.
There's one other quick thing.
Yeah.
The uh, I know they're in the middle of starting some kind of a media outlet of the town, you know, a website and so forth, so I don't know if those areas were a good place to advertise that as well. I don't know what, where they are with all of that, but they keep talking about it, so I'm assuming that something's been done.
I was just gonna say that, was, have I put you in touch with Therese?
Yes.
Okay.
Therese has access um, to everything I send to you. And then we just recently put together like an updated flyer that had information just for the survey that I sent out to Therese.
Okay.
So I can double check.
Therese is the assistant to our IT director and she's handling all the social media outlets. So uh, if we need to get some on social media, we just send it to her and she'll get it out there.
Might have to put something on Women's Community Access in their splash page. You know, as they're in between programs, they have a running PowerPoint page or splash page.
Can we talk about doing um, something with the cable, you know, like a show? They have a couple of shows of different things and I think that might be a good place to um, you know, have a half hour show talking about the importance of it all.
Sure.
Will you write my script?
Absolutely not.
Call me up, I'll sit down over here.
Perfect.
They are W A T D. They also have some stuff that they do Saturdays. And some pretty good programs.
We can also work um, maybe with getting some. I don't know, do you want the second meeting recorded? If the cable recording, so I can make sure that we get that.
Yeah, why not?
I just, I only want the thinking of it just because it's not a roundtable discussion and I don't know how the audio would work. But we can.
Reach out to them and see what they say.
Yeah, we can reach out to them and see what they say. I'll obviously have like an intro PowerPoint to begin and then yeah, we show that people attend.
Really get crazy and do a YouTube Live if you want.
May I make a suggestion? Maybe uh, the steering committee and a few other people could hold a meeting, right? Talking about the importance of the survey and then uh, run it on cable. Because they'll, they'll play it over and don't run over again. Because if they have no content, then you know, they'd be happy to fill in, so to speak. So I wonder if that might be another avenue.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, do you have any questions about progress or process?
Yeah, well, um, when will it be done?
June thirty at twenty twenty-four. We have a second before.
So the QR code went up last week, I'm gonna assume, because I checked it before the new year. Do we, do we have, who's got access to the count on the QR code? How many services have been taken?
Under.
How many have you seen so far?
Under a hundred.
Under a hundred, okay. It, it had to have gone up just sometime last week. So I checked it the weekend of the new year. I hadn't seen it yet.
Really? It was on there before that?
It was.
It was?
Yeah, it was on there before. Maybe I was just clicking on the planner. I always get default to his page.
So if it's under a hundred, I'm curious, what's the target response rate? Is there one?
My minimum's always a hundred. I will, I will beg people outside town hall to get to a hundred.
How long would it take to do the survey?
Uh, seconds, it's got a second.
The, the average completion estimate, I think, was ten to twelve minutes if you answered every question. Most people who take a survey omit thirty to fifty percent of questions. That usually drives it down to about five days.
The only reason I, I ask that is I know uh, when we were trying to uh, get CPC in town, we used to go down to the dump and we would meet with people and uh, convince them to fill things out. And you know, I, I wouldn't say strong on them, but certainly um, you know, encourage them to help out and, and fill some stuff out. So I'm wondering if that's something that we could consider.
What are some areas on the survey where you can actually sit and tell you? So you get some people, like, you get some pretty lengthy comments, right?
Yes.
Get them talking and engaged. Sometimes you can fill it out for them.
I heard somebody's, I heard somebody's gonna put senior housing a thousand times. So, hey, you can do that.
Well, one of the things we did here is when Rhiannon had the survey ready, I just took a paper form, basically. I passed it around to, I sent it via email to all the departments. And asked people to just fill it in and then just, you know, it's anonymous, fill it in, put it in our mailbox. And we collected them and passed them along, you know, so at least we get input from town hall.
Perfect.
Yeah, that was good. That gave us like the last round of edits before we published it to the public. People had comments of like, I wish I could have put this, so that helped us finish up some last second details.
That was like the soft opening?
Yeah.
Great. Any other further questions? Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's time with this. This is uh, certainly a great undertaking. And now we've got some person out there, so we can release some other videos. And yeah, we can work with uh, with Women's Community Access. We'll get the word out. Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is pedestrian improvement grant update. Provide update and present preliminary design plans for proposed sidewalks from Elm Street to High Street. Town planner.
So um, as the board's aware, we have a grant through the One Stop program for pedestrian improvements from Elm Street to High Street. We're working with a company called Verdantis, which the board is familiar with. Back in June of twenty twenty-three, they did their drone survey of this section of, or this corridor of Main Street. And uh, they are over twenty-five percent complete with their design work. So this is what you're seeing on the screen is a set of plans that, okay. So this is Elm Street and we're gonna be heading out towards High. So you're looking at sidewalks on either side and beneath that you'll see cross-sections.
You could really zoom in right down that tall, you'll get the detail from there.
Yeah.
So you're saying the sidewalk's on both sides?
Yeah, in this design, in this design, they're showing both sidewalks, both sides. And what you're seeing here, these cross-sections are every two hundred and fifty feet. So station zero would start here and when you get to two hundred and fifty, um, then you see a cross-section. So what we're looking at is, you know, sidewalks, both sides as a carry-along towards, towards High Street.
Can I ask you a quick question? Once we get to High Street, where do we go from there?
Well, for now, this is where, this is the, we'll say this is the first part. It's, it's to High Street at this point. Because that's where we get the grant for the money score. For the next round of One Stop, gonna pursue monies for High Street to fifty-eight. Because there are already plans that were done by VHB back in two thousand fourteen that show a design for sidewalks from High Street to fifty-eight.
So will that be on the same side as the Plymouth County Hospital? Uh, I hope.
Yeah, the dump. That, the, those, those design plans, I think, show sidewalk on both sides, I believe.
All the way down High Street?
Yeah. All the way down uh, Main Street. Not up High Street. There's no sidewalks being shown up High Street.
Oh, okay.
This is just Main Street.
Mr. Ellis?
How wide are those sidewalks? I can't see it up here.
I believe these are five.
Zoom in.
Five feet?
Five feet.
Zoom right, yeah, sure, sure.
They propose, propose five foot wide concrete sidewalk.
You're saying that the.
Concrete all the way up both sides?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're looking at price, we're looking at cost. So uh, and speaking with the highway superintendent, we're thinking that the best combination right now is granite curbing, asphalt sidewalk. Because the asphalt sidewalk becomes the easiest for him to repair if there's any damage versus uh, concrete. And there's also the cost factor.
So let me understand, it's not asphalt?
The sidewalk, we, we, these plans are showing a concrete sidewalk, but we're gonna look at costs, obviously.
Right.
So we're looking at concrete and granite, asphalt and granite, or asphalt in Cape Cod burn.
Now, if they use the uh, I'm not up to date on it, but if they use the cement, concrete and uh, the materials that they, they use for sanding and salting, will that have an effect on?
Yes, that's why we're looking at, after speaking. Right, after speaking with the highway superintendent, he said, look, the best one for me would be granite and asphalt. Because if there's a damage to the asphalt sidewalk, I can go in there, I can repair it a lot easier.
With, I agree with that. Tony, you said with Verdantis that they're, that this is a twenty-five percent done rendering so far? What's the other seventy-five percent gonna look like? What are we adding that we don't have yet?
Well, they'll get into the nitty gritty of things, so let's say we make a determination of, yep, it's gonna be asphalt and granite. They'll prepare details that'll reflect that. You know, they might make some adjustments as far as the cross-sections. Some of these sidewalks, because of where they're located, encroach a little bit into the traveled way. So you know, we have to look at the construction. Though it's not that, it's really not that huge of a deal to do it. So if you encroach into the travel way a little bit and you're gonna install the granite, you'd be doing cutting some asphalt. And speaking with Jameson, he's like, yeah, it's not that big of a deal to, to make it all work.
One of the things that I've noticed with this is that there's no lighting.
As in street lights?
Right.
Are you talking about like carriage lights along the street?
Right. I checked in with, I checked in with Abington's DPW in the North Abington section, Route fifty-eight, Route one twenty-three. They put those solar lights in, LED solar lights, at about ten years ago. The initial first run that they had done, it was about six of them that they installed and then they changed the vendor, the vendor. And it was, it's through National Grid. So National Grid, at first, the first six they installed, they weren't happy with them. They weren't producing the way that they're supposed to be. They stopped the project. It was about a two or three month time period. And the National Grid had chosen another vendor, they started the project back up again. And they actually went back and they replaced the first six that they originally had installed. So there is a program through National Grid, apparently, and I tried calling a bunch of times, tried it again today. But there is a program through National Grid that takes the street lighting up above and brings it down to these. And then there's a small, it was a small set of solar panels off to power them. And I asked the DPW superintendent, he said that he loves them, absolutely loves them, the town loves them. After they were all installed, they had a little bit of refraction that they were concerned about with some of the citizens. They called National Grid, they came out, they put little diffusers on the side. And they said, he said it's been an absolute, a great program and working with them to reduce the up above. They went from the, what do you call the big bulbs, the sodium little, right, and little halides. They went from those to the LEDs. And I just would hate this to be a missed opportunity for us to, to, to bring down some of that classic going look if we could.
Yeah, um, I have to go.
The area from Elm Street through the commercial section there is pretty well lit coming off a lot of the private, a lot of the commercial lots. But as you get down towards the corridor that starts off with a mostly residential light, from there moving down into that, you know, what we're calling now the South Hanson, like Main Street Village. I, I, I think, I just would like to see if we could find out if, if that's true, that National Grid still has that program. To be able to bring some of that lighting down, bring it down to the street level.
Yeah, I'll check, I'll check with Verdantis, because they may, that may have been, they may have mentioned that. I'm not a hundred percent on it.
In addition to that, Abington then further went and, you know, the banner program? That has the veterans up, the hometown heroes went. They further went and retrofitted their, a good cross-section of that area that has those flags. It just, it has a really nice look to it, so. And I didn't know if, them only being twenty-five percent done, I didn't know if within the next seventy-five percent, they were gonna be capturing, you know, where the utilities could be and what would happen there, but uh, there, there was a push from National Grid to break some of that stuff down to a little level. The high, the high lights, they're all diffused by trees, it's, and it's a wash everywhere. I just think we have, we have a great opportunity to kind of look at that.
Yeah, I'll double, I'll double check with uh, I'll double check with Roy on that one to see if they were talking about lighting.
So, so Tony, on this plan, right, uh, one of the things that uh, I don't see is now, this goes from Elm Street to the intersection of High Street, right? Well, you take a left up High Street, you're at um, an important resource for the town. You go down a little further to Crooker Place, you're at another uh, crossroads in town where people could have access to Burridge Pond as well as other town-owned properties on that side, behind Crooker Place, right? So I feel like if you're gonna create a village, why wouldn't you create a path down to um, those two items so that people could walk down there? So they could park at Dunkin' Donuts and grab a cup of coffee and walk down, take a walk down into the, either uh, and grab a cup of coffee and walk down, take a walk down into the either Bay Circuit Trail, which is on Crooked Place at this point. So we're building our sidewalks for the community, but we're not connecting the community to some really good resource. So I think we should reconsider the length of that and extend it down to Crooked Place. Well, just tell them.
That's phase two. Can we put that in the master plan too?
Expand the sidewalks in the master.
That's phase two, though, right? There's a second phase to this.
The second phase, yeah, it's all being done through grants. So, yeah, with Jason, you know, so this is, this is just dealing with sidewalks from Elm to High. And then the next one will be High to.
Can we take away Elm Street side of it?
The other thing, Tony, as far as talking about lighting, if, did I count, is there four crosswalks or three crosswalks?
There's crosswalks at various areas on the on the plan.
But they didn't, they didn't put any renderings as far as ADA compliance?
Oh, yeah, these are all going to have to.
So they're going to add that on too, because I don't, I didn't see it, which is very basic.
Yeah, this is, it's, yeah. So what what I'll do is, I wanted to present it tonight, and then what I'll do is, I'll email you all of these, and you can look through them and, you know, study them a little closer.
I'm still curious to know, and I'll keep talking to this until somebody tells me that it just can't be done. But that area down by the Cranberry Building, the, to get from that, the back area over across, we still have got that major issue with the fact that the train tracks go right through the area, that area.
Right, so you, this is the, this is the train track right here?
Right, right.
And this is the sidewalk. The other thing I brought up to Verdantis was, hey, you're going to have to speak to someone through the MBTA because you're putting sidewalks in there right away. So you're going to, they're going to have to look at these and say it's okay, you know? So we're, we're in process of getting in touch with them to find out, you know?
Is there a way to do it up and over?
Oh, you mean like stairs that go up and over? Doesn't make it handicap accessible, and it's very ugly.
You mean, you're talking about from one side of the street to the other?
Correct. Well, for, you know, for accessibility in that back, for the back lot, if that, if that's part of the MBAT.
MBTA.
Communities, if that's going to be part of that, you're going to have a major egress issue coming off of that property. You're coming off that property and basically coming into an MBTAT intersection every single time. So if that ever was to be developed, that, that.
Well, they have a crosswalk, they have a crosswalk here.
Right, but if you go, where's the, where's the frontage for that back lot? So that the person was just on it.
So it's right, this is right through here, because this is the Marangello Ocean Spray Building.
So come to the left of that, right, that lot to the left, keep going left.
Yeah.
Left, 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 left. Right there, that's such a congested area to try to get up and over that.
And plus, you know, the other thing, Joe, is one, there's no sidewalks there now. And you have the.
Well, minimal.
What you call the arms that come down, right? There should be arms, at least on the other side with the Dunkin' Donuts, is pedestrians stopping from going around it.
Yeah, those are all things they'll have to put in as part of it.
If that was to be developed and we mixed-use that back area, that's going to be a major.
And I would think that as all these crosswalks, it's going to have to be the light, the signage, not only signage, but the.
I know what you're saying, but what happens too is a lot of that, that's going on to private property, you know, to do it. And if if they develop it, then they can install it at that point. Should be adequate lightage for flashing when somebody wants a crossing, you know, get across there. The only thing they got to watch out for is when the train stops up. He's not going to bother.
Yeah, all that has to be taken into account.
Can we do like Hingham and put the train underground? Hingham did it, yeah.
Can I ask them one other question?
Sure.
Where the Cranberry Building is, right, this edge of the roadway to the building itself is, I don't think it's wide enough for sidewalks. So is the roadway rail going to change as a result of that?
No.
So you don't think it's, you think it's wide enough?
Uh, it just makes it.
Really?
There might be some slight encroachment, but it just makes it. I know, yeah, you're right, it's right up against the.
Right up against.
The edge of the right away.
Yeah, so if somebody puts an air conditioner in the window, something like that, you know?
I do love to see this, this is, this is progress, this isn't the furthest we've seen.
I mean, I mean, the other, the other thing too is when I've seen municipalities put in sidewalks, and all those mailboxes are right in the middle of the sidewalks. You know, and the sidewalks are turned sideways because they're going to get clipped in the street and, you know, and the postal service says, you know, it has to be X amount of feet.
Yeah, they want them so per- parallel with the street.
Right, but you know.
Makes it easier for them.
Yeah, but it's just, you know, so you see all that, it eats up the sidewalk because he has all these mailboxes in the sidewalks, you know?
But if you, if you put it on the other side, they can't get to it.
Tony, go to the third page, the third layer. Yeah, with that Cranberry building, that sidewalk.
Oh, actually, you're, I'm sorry, you were on it. Go over there to the right.
Have you ever been over there?
You can see that there's actually.
Try to walk on that, it's like, you know, oh my God, you know, and if you slip, you're out in the road.
There is, there is a. A change in the sidewalk there on the right, keep going to the right turn, right there. There is a change in the, there's a jog, and I think that's for drainage, right?
Yeah, it goes around, it goes around some of the existing drainage because of the existing conditions. I also sent them a copy of the Egan Project so that they could incorporate the entrances, the egress into the design. But so this is, like I said, this is the preliminary design, this is what they've come up with. I've had some conversations with them, I had questions. And, you know, we'll keep moving forward. But one thing I could do as well is, if you take a look at it, I can ask maybe probably not the next meeting, because I think we're going to have a pretty full agenda then, probably the first meeting in February. Have a representative from Verdantis come in and speak. And we can go over this with them, and you can throw out the questions at them as well.
Thank you.
So it's, you know, it's, it's getting there, yeah.
No, they did this in Rockland, Beach Hill, heading into downtown Rockland. It looks pretty good.
It does, I guess.
Yeah, what this will do is, it basically, it's going to incorporate and go in front of the, I mean, the big thing is this particular area around the old Ocean Spray Building and revitalizing, and that's what this is going to address. The next set is going to be to try and get grant money to update those plans, and then go from High Street all the way out to Mont Pont, to Mont Pontus Street, which will pick up Crooked Place, LZ Thomas, you know, connect the LZ Thomas to the train station.
Yeah, the Ball Field.
The Ball Fields, yeah. And then I'd like to maybe, at some point, maybe try and chase some money to get sidewalks going up High Street to get the park and then interconnect all this.
Kind of makes sense.
Yeah, and my hope now is, okay, so we get the design, which is great. I'd like to get, I'd like to find us some money so that we can actually build these things. I'd like to start seeing some, you know, legit building. Progress, progress, yeah, you know, get some sidewalks down, streets gate, lighting.
Which have it, Mr. Brady?
So what's the amount that the town would be required to cover for this?
For this construction? Uh, we haven't reached that yet. But that's one of the things I'll be working on. That's why they're looking at the various types of, you know, sidewalk and curbing.
Okay, so. Start developing, buy their war bonds.
It'd be similar to other projects in town where sidewalks were proposed, and mostly it was engineering fees they were looking for. So that could run a little bit of money.
Well, like I said, we're going to chase as much grant money as we can to pay for this.
Is there a little bit area going up the hill of Main Street where they'd have to do any kind of a retaining wall for the properties that are there?
What, towards Elm?
Towards Elm, yeah.
There was, there's a couple of properties on the south side. They thought that because of the grading, there might have been the requirement for a retaining wall, but I guess with this, they figured that they don't need it at this point.
We'll, we'll ask them in February. Any other questions in regards to pedestrian improvement grant update? Board business, open space, Tony, I don't think, there hasn't been a meeting with, there hasn't been a meeting with Open Space, sorry. And that OCPC, thank you very much. OCPC has, we'll see who has. Ten AM, MFO, MF, MF, what's the name that, that, that came out?
Metropolitan Planning.
Yeah, that's on, NPO, that's on Wednesday at ten AM. I'm going to reach out to the chair of that to find out if they're going to have a Zoom option. I'll try to hop on that, but other than that, I think everybody's just been getting into the swing, I think, since the new year. Mr. Ellis. Yeah, sure, yeah. Mr. Ellis.
Yes, during the holidays, not much got done, but did, Tony, did you hear from Joe?
I saw him downstairs. I don't know if he's still there.
Is he down there?
He was down there with the, was it the?
Capital Improvement.
Send him a text.
I'd like to actually get that plan that's been done and get it on the website, get it on the social media.
He said he was coming up. He was supposed to do that last week or something.
I can send him an email. I'll send him a direct email and ask him. Because then, yeah, I think we should get that out there. So that people can see, see the progress, you know, because we do have progress.
Mr. Cohen isn't here. Mr. Cameron, CPC?
I have nothing to add at this time. I have a meeting on the eleventh, I believe. I just got through Master Plan and Stair Committee.
Mr. Benignano, Drainage and Restore Water Committee.
Um, well, holidays, nothing, but we are work, Mr. Ed Hill and I are working on scheduling schedules to get someone to leave.
Administration, Town Planner update?
Well, twenty twenty-three, the board set some goals. I didn't know if the board was looking to maybe set some goals for twenty twenty-four. Do you have any thoughts?
I'd like to really try to hammer home closing out the projects that we have open-ended. I'd really like to see that so that we can enter twenty twenty-five with whatever we've created. We've got projects that have been, we've, we've got projects that have been on the books since before Mr. Ellis was on.
I'll make a, I'll make a comment to that, Mr. Chev.
Yes, please.
Some of these projects that are open that have bond money, if the board is agreeable, the next step, I've sent notifications to these developers, asking them to, you know, I've sent regular mail, I've sent certified mail. And I'd like to try and send one more time, and then after that, basically, start proceedings to chase and grab, and take the, take the bond money.
Please.
My developer disappeared.
Oh, no, he's at Home Depot. No, he lives next to where the old schoolhouse was.
The whole entire development sent their HOA checks, and they all got sent back to everybody.
They got sent back?
Yep.
So, so the, now, the caveat becomes that that money, you know, we go through the process.
The general fund.
Exactly, just as long as you're aware of that. Now, some projects like, like a sawmill.
Sawmill Lane.
Sawmill Lane. You know, if, when you look at that on the GIS, I mean, that might be the, I don't know, I'd have to do a little more digging to see if they have an HOA. But that's the type of project that maybe that would be better off to stay as a private way and be maintained by the HOA. Now, I know what usually tends to happen is, after a few years, the HOA usually doesn't, runs out of money, other people would say, we want the town to take it. But it may be something worth looking at, is all I'm saying. But the other ones, you know, is just try and chase, chase after the bond money and, and take it and try and close out what we can.
So I know, whenever we bring this up, I say the same thing. What can we do to close those gaps so we don't allow that to happen again? Twenty twenty-four should be to, you know, close that gap.
Well, that's, that's going to be one of the things is, well, as, as we get on my list here. So let's go through the goals first, and then I'll, I can address what you were talking about, John.
Well, that's, I'm advocating that that become one of our goals.
For me, that's one of the major goals is to, to close those out, to get those closed.
I'd like to add some information on that. When I first got on the board, it's been an ongoing problem. You cannot take the bond without justification. And the town council will tell you you can't unless they, something needs to be done. And there's money sitting there since before I got on the board, there's one on Elm Street, there was a lot of money that you just can't. And and to give the money back, you have to give it back to the original person that brought the money in the beginning. So the contractor or the developer, the money has to go back to. We tried to talk to, the only way to do it, according to, who's the rep?
G S O, the state rep?
Yeah.
Josh Cutler?
Cutler. We talked to Mr. Cutler about it, and he was going to try and get the state to come up because it's an ongoing problem somewhere else too. And to try and get legislation put forward that you can, after so many days, the town can take the money. But as the way it is now, they.
Well, there's, there is, there is in the subdivision control a way to do it, and the town has to adopt certain, this, this particular regulation, which Hanson has done. So the mechanism is there. It's been done on another project, on one project in the past, and what wound up happening is the money went into the general fund and then gone. So any, anything I do, first off, is one, I'm looking for approval of the board, and second, it would be through use of town council. You know, I'm not, this isn't anything I'm going to be tackling on my own. Yeah, I'm not Perry Mason. It's getting town council to say, okay, what do we need to do and how do we need to do it?
I, I'd recommend too that you get a hold of Cutler and see if he can, if something's come up.
He's gone up to the state now.
Well. So can I just sort of thought out there, before I forget, is why, why couldn't we, like, let's say, let's call it, I don't know, Namers Street, whatever it is that we're, that we're looking to. So call Christopher Lane, right? So there was money on the table on Christopher Lane, but it went into the general fund. So why can't we go and ask the town, right, for the amount that they pretty much owe that development? Because they, they can't just take the money and put it in the general fund because there's other laws that say that that money has to be given back to whomever. So if they show up and knock on the door, whether the town likes it or not, they're going to have to write a check to this guy, right? So why couldn't we ask the town at town meeting to approve the movement of that money back to the, either the people that live in the street or to some plan where the stuff would be repaired?
If they have a valid HOA, I think that's the intent, the intent is put it, put it into.
Give back to them so that they can use it for the purposes that it was designed for.
If they don't, they made a donation to the town Hanson for new sidewalks on Main Street.
Right, but I don't know, I'm just, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of, you know, is there a way to, you know, to, I wouldn't say force the town, but at least get a commitment from them that they're going to return those funds to their rightful owner. And I don't think people really are aware that even though that money's in the general fund, the general fund can't spend it because it's owed to somebody. If they don't know that, then, you know, and I can tell you right now, from what I've seen, that could get forgotten.
Well, I know, I went, I know I went and looked, I know, I know I looked up one, it's not coming, I want to say it's Hemlock. And it was like thirty thousand dollars, and a previous predecessor of mine went through the process, town council, et cetera, et cetera, got the money, and it went to the general fund. I spoke to the town, I spoke to the town accountant. Where did the money go? Where did it go? Because if I'd like, if I'd like to get my hands on it somehow to apply it towards this project and.
Do we see the, do we see the, the deposit into the general fund? Is that traceable?
I tried, I asked them to look at that, to look at, don't know where it went.
Well, I, I only say that to be.
That's where they were looking for a lot of money.
As a, as a cautionary tale. In CPC, we have a CP two form, right, where the taxes that are held in that account are in the general fund, but they're reimbursable back to CPC, and for the last ten years, it's never happened. So the treasurer collector is the person that should actually know where that money is.
I inquired treasurer collector, I inquired to the town accountant, I inquired to both of them to do a deep dive to find out where did the money go? Because I would like to know where it went, because if it's available, I'd like to use it to do the repairs on the road so we can close it out, get the ass built, and get the road on the books. And it's.
I've got a stupid question.
Gone, so.
And I'm not, and I, and this is actually legit, and I'm just trying to be cheeky. Is there a site like that find mass money for towns and municipalities that might have a check that just kind of, going to who knows where?
I have no idea.
I wonder if you could put that in the town of Hanson and see if there's some, if there's some stuff that's on, you would think that banks would try to.
I mean, so, you know, anything I do there, like I said, is going to be, it's one of the goals, is to now, let's use our town council and go after the monies, however legally we can do it, and get it. And yes, if it does have to go into the general fund, I would like to see it earmarked, once it goes into the general fund, to come to the planning board for that particular street so that we could address any of the issues and/or, and close it out. And get it on the books.
Yep.
Do you remember a guy named Ron, what is his name? Do you remember a guy named Ron, um, what was his name? Town administrator that went to Duxbury?
Ron, uh, Rainey Reed.
Rainey Reed. He took all that money.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, he cut everybody's salary and.
He's gone. He left. He left Dexter.
Oh, yeah.
And so to seg, so to segue from, from that point about closing out those projects that have been open for forever and a day, I'd like to also see that the board of selectmen not only have the approved street listings, that has the private ways and the public, the, uh, I'm sorry, I'm a chance, the, the, the town select board has a list of the private ways listing. In addition to that listing, I think that the town has not done a very good job at maintaining records with the HOAs. You've got, you've got, uh, HOAs, and if you don't mind, Mr. Benonato, you've got HOAs like Mr. Benonato's HOA, that they're doing the right thing. They're organized, right? They have a name of a person that's a point of contact. But then we have multiple other private ways. We did a lot of effort to mark the private ways. There was a reason behind that, and we've lost contact. And I think that the onus on some of that, yeah, absolutely, if the town wasn't reaching out to those folks to say, hey, we haven't heard from your HOA, who's the person? I think that we've lost, completely lost a lot of that. What results from that is having a good contact and having the select board know who the people are to contact is if our highway survey, our highway department has to go down and do a repair, the select board has the right to charge.
Yeah, but you already ha, you already have a, a way in because, you know, stormwater management, they're supposed to have yearly reports as to, uh, the maintenance that they're performing. They have all kinds of maintenance agreements with, uh, conservation, stormwater management.
Right.
So you already have, you know, the ability to say, hey, wait a second, you know?
We even, what we found out through the recent exercise that we went through with, um, now let's say, uh, all the way, thank you, with all the way, Green Lane, we found out that the highway department went down and repaired a sidewalk in a private neighborhood, and if there was an HOA that was established, then there could have been some assessments. So I, I really think that we need to tighten up rates. I don't think that's the planner's office that's supposed to do that, if I'm not mistaken. I think the town clerk is supposed to have one file, who the HOA representatives are, correct?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I think she gave me a list. I'll double check. I think I might have a list of active HOAs. I think we, I may have sent it to you.
You did, yeah, there was like three, all of them on top. That's my two cents.
Which may, which may be the only thing that, that they have.
It could have been. So I wanna, I wanna tighten up, I wanna tighten up the, um, the projects that are outstanding so that we can put that stuff behind us and actually plan, as John pointed out, we, we're in the planning business, and, and tighten up the con, the rank contacts of who's supposed to be out there, uh, in case the town needs to contact them. And, and my third one is to work on, but I see some stuff in here, work on the administrative assistant.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no problem.
I just, I had this thought, I have to get it up.
Those are my, those are my inputs.
So, um, the, um, what, why can't we have a, a warrant article? Well, we have a budget every year, right, for X amount of money, right? So why can't we have a warrant article asking for the twenty-four thousand dollars for Christopher Lane, uh, so that we can, uh, at least get it out of the general fund in the respect that, uh, it would be earmarked, and I believe we can do that.
I don't, I don't know, but we could, yeah, definitely worth, yeah.
Well, that's what I, I think if, I think if, I think if we're able to take the monies between now and October, between now and September, I think we're able to take the monies. Then we can have that article prepped and ready. This amount of money went into the general fund from all of the work that the planning office had done.
It's time to pay it back.
It's time to pay it back, right? And if we get it out of the general fund, then we could transfer it to the planning department and have the plan department.
Execute, execute, uh, it feels necessary based on what legal counsel would advise.
Yeah.
So it's worth a look at.
Oh, definitely. Yeah. Like I said, I, I wanna, I wanna just get it done as well because it's, you know, it's been hanging around.
Yeah. Cause the state board, it says when you release any of the funds, it has to go back to the builder. That you're gonna have to get a.
Yeah, we, we went through that though, and then, uh, town council said, if you notify the builder with two certification notice, you've got them, then they're basically defunct.
Right, but that's taking it to replace, not taking it because you want the money. That's to replace some of the work that needs to be done.
Yeah, we'll get council to pay and see what we can do, yeah.
If they don't want the money, they don't want their money, that's.
A lot of the geniuses figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the best thing to do is try and sit down with town council, what they hear.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah. Like I said, it, it's a case of, okay, I'm gonna give you, I've sent them more than one notification. I sent them regular mail, I've sent the certified mail, I'm not hearing anything back. There's one of them that, they're gone. I mean, when I mean they're gone, they're gone. Forget it. We're, we're never going to, we're not even gonna find a, a human being to be able to contact to get the money, to, to, or even, uh, get to release the money. That's gonna be like, you know, call Magnum P I and see if you can maybe find someone or an air. That it, then it's a case of, okay, if the board's, uh, uh, agreeable to it, then now it's just time, let's put the hammer down and start going after it. Follow the legal process and just go after it and, and get it done.
There's, there's one on Elm Street that the contractor came in, it was a house, a crest from, uh, that subdivision on the left, what's that? Uh, I can't think of the name, it's on the right-hand side anyway. There was a house and a lot of land. And the developer came in and, um, proposed to the planner boy that they wanted to subdivide the property, tear down the building, and go and for approvals. Well, when they sent out the note, what planner boy sent out the notification, the owner came in and, and, uh, at some point afterwards, because they put up a, a bond of, uh, I think it was like fifty grand or something, and, um, cash. And, um, then all of a sudden, the owner come in and said, what's going on? And they said, the owner said, we never asked him to do what he's doing. He doesn't, we don't even know who he is. He just took it upon himself to do it.
Well, I figure one of two things is gonna happen.
And the money sits there, and nobody's come back. They tried to notify him to come get the money, and he's not, he's non-existent.
I, I figure one of two things is gonna happen once we go down that road. Either A, we're gonna get their attention, and they're gonna come see us. Or B, we're gonna get the money and we're just gonna do what we need to do.
Right.
That's it. It's gonna be one of the two.
It's been an ongoing problem.
Yeah, but either way, it's a good, good option.
Yeah.
Either A or.
Either way, it's moving it forward.
And, and one other thing I was thinking about, gentlemen, that we've talked about for the past many years, there used to be a time where you would see in the minutes from the planning office, you would see there was an appearance before the planning board, and the planning board voted to defer to the zoning board of appeals. I would like us to get back to that. Cause there's stuff that happens at the ZBA, and we have no knowledge of it whatsoever. It never came before this board. Tony might have caught wind through some inner office mail on a Friday about something that's happening Monday at ten AM.
I do get cop, they do, we do get in our mailbox any ZBA applications or approvals. Uh, I do look at them, and if it's, you know, ones that are, uh, like site plans or something like that, I do comment on. If it's something small, I, you know, I don't even comment if someone's gonna put an addition on or something like that. But if you wanna, what we can do is just as we start taking them in, we'll just put them on, uh, you know, the administration.
Sure.
And you can, we can, you can go over them.
Yeah, and I'm sure the ZBA probably wants to have some input into that, but.
Well, in, in part with your conversation, this thing we're gonna assign here tonight for the, um, the thing on roller coaster road, right? The house is already built, and we're signing this thing tonight, right? When realistically, this should have been all taken care of before the, before the permit was issued. So, uh, why is that happening?
So that's, so compliances. Why did that issue get, that permit got even got issued? That's really shocked about that. So, yeah, so just kind of tightening things up, just really tightening things up. And if the ZBA wants to come and talk to us about what they think should just be complained, to go over them, I really honestly think that they need to get that opinion from the planning board before they just go, except for what's in the rules and regulations that's under their jurisdiction. But there, there was a time where you would see in our minutes, somebody had an appearance, and it was to defer it to the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, I have seen that.
Anybody else? A motion?
So the.
Well, that was not seconded.
The, the next, the next thing is, uh, Kim has prepared a warrant, uh, regarding increasing the hours to twenty, from nineteen and a half to twenty-two. And, uh, she has a draft there, and it's something that I believe, once the warrants, I believe you're gonna open up tomorrow night or this week. But town meeting for May, we'd like to put it on the agenda, or, or put the article in for the May town meeting warrant.
Yeah, certainly submit the article. If you need a motion, put it.
I don't think, uh, well, I suppose as a matter of procedure, you could do a motion and vote on it.
Does this, does this meet the goals though, Tony, as far as you're concerned, for the twenty-two, twenty-two and a half hours?
Yeah, would, Kim and I, and Kim can speak on it as well, uh, we figured that twenty-two hours would work at this time. Uh, and may be the most palatable for the town to accept. Uh, as you're well aware, we tried previously to go full-time with the previous admin, and that didn't go well. And as you're well aware, the town is struggling financially, so we figured that twenty-two hours, uh, though not ideal, would work for right now, and then maybe we can go back, you know?
Does this change some of the, of the things that I was talking about the last meeting?
Does it change it?
Is that considered a full-time? Is it a benefited position?
That, that is a, um, a vested, a vested.
Yeah, part-time, but you get vested, you get to stop putting, you start heading towards the vestment for your pension type of deal.
What benefits?
No.
So may I make a suggestion? I think you guys should approach, I, I, I believe that the, uh, finance committee, uh, hauls you guys in for a meeting, like, you know, they do the light reveal, you're in the night of kind of thing, they quiz you about all your stuff.
They have.
So, they haven't, right?
Yeah.
Well, you've got a good argument there, and, uh, that's a good place to start because if you think about it, um, that a lot of people, when they go to town meeting, they look, you know, uh, what does the finance committee think? And, you know, sometimes they don't think, but most times they do. And if they read this, maybe they'll consider, um, supporting it, or maybe some of them will, even if not all of them. So I think it would be a good move to at least have a discussion with them so they don't get blindsided by this.
There's an appetite. There's an appetite from the personnel board to, to, to increase so that it's proper. Instead of having to do it twice, so, but I hope and I get that support.
Right, but I think the finance committee is a, is a, is a critical point, point of support for that, is just my thought.
Hello?
No, it's just a machine that does that.
Anyway, I just wanted to throw that in there.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, the last time we tried, uh, it, we submitted the article, and we figured that was the expectation. You know, we'd get called before the committee to have an explanation, and nothing happened. You know, I was a little surprised. I was like, wow, jeez, I figured I'd get a call, be like, okay, come on down, we'll put the spotlight on you. Why? 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 You know?
Yep.
Rubber hose, whatever, and we make our argument, but.
So why not invite yourselves, you know, like, uh, if they don't invite you, then you can invite yourself and say, this is, we're here because we're submitting this article, and we want your support, and here's why, you know? If they don't, they don't. I mean, you know, at least it's worth trying, you know?
That's a good point.
Uh, so the chairman, I'm telling a favorable, favorable motion to move forward the proposed article as written.
So moved.
This has been being by Mr. Kimick. Seconded by Mr. Benonato. Any discussion regards to the motion? Seeing none, although it's a favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, four zero one. So that will move forward.
Okay, and can I ask one more question?
Good job.
Hot company.
I'm not there yet.
Sorry.
I'm not there yet. Uh, proposed wetlands protection and stormwater management amendments proposed by D E P.
I just want to make the board aware that, uh, it's currently in the public comment period, but that the state is going to be making some, uh, serious updates to the Wells Protection Act and the Stormwater Management Guidelines. Stormwater Management Guidelines, I, if anyone would like a, if anyone would like a copy of what's being proposed, it's eight hundred and six pages of the new revised stormwater guidelines. Uh, a lot of it has to do with obviously addressing climate change. The, that's gonna go live is still to be determined, but the Wells Protection Act is in the public comment period, so I'm thinking that's probably gonna go live sometime in January of twenty twenty-five. That being said, because these regulations are coming down, I think as maybe a potential goal of twenty twenty-four is we start looking at revisiting or visiting the subdivision control law, the Hanson subdivision control law, to update it. Cause the last time it was updated was twenty twelve. And so I think we should probably look at updating it to bring it more into line with today's regulations and the regulations that are gonna be coming down the pipe.
So is there like a grant potential from, uh, the state, uh, like, we wanna improve, uh, overseeing of these regulations, why wouldn't they help us bake it into our bylaw?
There might be. I'll have to look to see if there's maybe a, a, a technical assistance grant out there, um, that we can, you know, and see what the costs are, to have a company assist with revising the subdivision control laws that it needs, you know? Because the stormwater one, it's big. That, that one's gonna be the big one. You're gonna see a big change in, in some of the designs because of specifically the rainfall amounts. That's changed, you know, that's gonna be almost area-specific. Because with GPS now, you can almost, in essence, design a drainage system based on the rainfall for Hanson.
Particularly for the area.
Particularly for that area. So, um, I just wanted to make you aware. I can, I'll, I'll send you, uh, the email of the Stormwater Management book if you want, and, uh, I'll find, I'll find, and I'll get the link for the, um, actually, I might even, I might have downloaded it. The Wellness Protection Act, the red line version, and you can go through its, you know, just go to all the red line parts, really, because it's still a lot of reading. Uh, and you can take a look and see what some of the things that, that are coming down the line. Uh, the next thing was, um, the Mullen Rule, uh, you know, the technically, uh, specifically, it should be in writing. So I did is I created a form, um, I created a form that, I'm just gonna call it up on the screen.
It's just a declination form.
Is that like the Mulligan Rule?
Yeah, same, the Mullen Rule's, yeah.
So.
It's just a declination form. I think it's great.
Yeah, I sent it to town council, they reviewed it, they made some edits, and so the, what you're looking at is based on their edits. And it's just something, uh, you know, if you wanna vote, you know, they, they've taken out some, uh, paragraphs that I had. And, uh, just so it's something that we'll have with us at meetings, and if, it has to be implemented by any of the members of the board, you can just fill out this form and, uh, everything.
This would be a matter of the record too.
Correct.
Yeah.
We can file with the town clerk as part of the minutes or anything like that.
So do we need a motion for it?
I, I'd like a motion just as a matter of procedure so that it's on record.
So moved. Entertaining, the motion to accept and adopt the certificate pursuant to general law C thirty-nine, section twenty-three D of participation in session of an adjudicatory hearing where the undersigned members missed a single hearing. So form created internally within the planning department, the town Hanson, by the town planner, vetted by town council. Yeah, so moved. Motion presented by Mr. Kimick. Seconded by Mr. Ellis. Any discussion regards to the motion? The only discussion I would have, Tony, is if, once this is adopted, I, I think that you should forward this on to the town clerk and have it put throughout the entire, that's my recommendation, throughout the entire town hall, I think they should, or other board should be, uh, educated about.
I believe that, um, that in, um, conservation, there's stuff in our, in our stuff for that, and I believe it's two meetings. So it's different than this. So you might wanna reach out to them and see, you know, what they do. Cause I know they do something, I, I can remember, for us, it was always a problem, because there were five members, sometimes it'd only be three, and two would show back up, and, you know, so I know that, um, you know, that the MMA, um, had a whole thing on that, on how many meetings you could miss and what you had to do to, um, to make it right.
Well, this one's based on the general bylaw and the court case, and then it passed it along to, to town council for their review.
Oh, that sounds good. Yeah, I was just throwing it out there, but I know, like, in conservation, it was more than one.
Yeah.
You know, so maybe a situation where.
On the motion, although it's a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, four zero one. It is adopted.
Definitely saved on here, already was, the special town meeting in two thousand six.
That's what Tony, it was added to the bylaw. He went with, with the bylaw and with, um, a court case that would have challenged that. Uh, in regards to invoices, we have, uh, two invoices, one for seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, ninety cents. That is for Randantis, for what we saw this evening. The other is for eleven thousand, thirty-nine and twenty-nine cents for OCPC, uh, again, for the master plant. Uh, are they not prevailing ways, Tony? Oh, no, 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 it's, it's an entity, yeah, okay. Any questions in regards to these invoices? Uh, OCPC, eleven thousand, thirty-nine and twenty-nine cents.
What was that for?
That's for.
We've seen so far with the master plant.
It's being paid out of the grant.
Don't we get any coffee or anything out of that?
I see that the town administrator already signed this.
Yeah, but we. Uh, what, the way it works, uh, Mr. Chair, is the. Uh, what, the way it works, uh, Mr. Chair, is the mass, the, we'll call the planning council, Andrew Dantis, submit invoice to us. Then, I submit a reimbursement form to the state.
Okay.
Which is then signed by the, uh, town administrator. Then what happens is the state sends the town the money, and then I have to create a warrant to pay the invoice. I thought maybe the state would pay directly, but they don't, so the money comes to the town, the town, the treasurer puts it into an account, and then I have to go, and I have to create the warrant to actually pay the invoice. It's a quite a long process.
I can see that.
It's easier for the state, but, um.
Well, I thought to some degree that, you know, if the money came in, maybe the treasurer would just cut a check and send it out, cause we have the, the forms. We've, we're all on the same page now, and we, we get the system, so.
Does anybody have anything for good of the order? And a term motion to adjourn?
Don't have any major.
It wasn't seconded.
I'll second that.
Um, Mr. Ellis made a motion to adjourn, promptly seconded by Mr. Kimmich. Any questions in regards to the motion? Saying none, all those are fair to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, four zero one. We adjourned at eight twelve.